Okay. Well, notice of this meeting was issued on May 19, 2020. And also, we moved the meeting, gave another notice on May 28th that tonight's meeting will be at 6:30. If you are a member of the public and would like to participate in public comment, we do have a link on the district's website that you can go to for the board meetings. Click on that. After completing the form, you will receive a phone number to call in. Please call within the first five minutes of the board meeting in order to be heard at this meeting. Once you're in that room, you'll be placed into a waiting room of Microsoft Teams, and then you'll eventually be invited to public comment. So if you would like to participate in public comment, there is a link on our website. You can click on that and fill that out, and then you'll be invited into the meeting. The meeting will begin at 6:30. So, thank you. While it is 6:30 pursuant to Section 841411 of Nebraska statutes and Executive Order 2024, which was issued May 19, 2020, the next regular meeting of the Board of Education of Douglas County School District 0001 and Board of Educational Services Unit Number 19 will be held by video conference on Monday, June 15, 2020 at 6:30 PM. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection on the district website at district OPS.org. Pursuant to Section 841412 of the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act, along with a current copy of Executive Order 2024, are available as an attachment to the agenda for this meeting. The agenda and attachments may be found at the district website, district OPS.org. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America.
And to the republic.
Which stands.
One nation.
Under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Dr. Holman will lead us in the OPS Vision Emission Statement.
Thank you. First, our vision: every student, every day, prepared for success. And our mission: Omaha Public Schools prepares all students to excel in college, career, and life.
Thank you, Dr. Holman. Mr. Ray, roll call, please.
Here.
Gotti.
Present.
Holman.
Present.
Cracky.
Here.
Pearlman.
Here.
Ryan.
Present.
Smith. Snipe.
Present.
Snow.
Here.
Eight present.
Thank you. Mr. Smith had a prior engagement, but will also be attending tonight's meeting a little bit later. I will entertain a motion to excuse Mr. Smith from tonight's meeting. He'll be joining a little bit later, but he'll be tardy.
Kimless Snipes, I'm up.
There's a motion by Ms. Snipe. Is there a second?
Second, Nancy Cracky.
Second by Mrs. Cracky. Mr. Ray, roll call, please.
Snipe.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Gotti.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Cracky.
Aye.
Pearlman.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Eight aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to item F1, the Treasurer's Report. Mr. Roberts.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay, President Snow?
Yes, indeed.
All right. Good evening. President Snow, members of the board, Superintendent Logan, the financial statements for the period ended April 30, 2020, have been finalized and submitted for your review.
Thank you. Moving on, if anybody has any questions or comments, please direct them to Mr. Roberts later on. Moving on to Superintendent Communications, Dr. Logan.
Good evening, President Snow. All right, make sure I'm on. I'm not sure. Am I on?
Uh-huh. For me, you are.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, President Snow, Vice President Holman, members of the Board of Education, and those watching while the streaming this afternoon. So, as a superintendent of the largest school district in our state, I want to take a few minutes to acknowledge that these past weeks in our community have been challenging. I know these times are particularly difficult for our young people, many of whom are simply trying to make sense of what they're seeing in daily coverage and what is happening all across our country and could be happening to them personally. As the largest and most diverse school district in the state, the diversity of our student bodies, staff, and community is our greatest strength. We continue to build a school district culture where each student is known, loved, inspired, and encouraged to achieve to be the best version of themselves. We love our students. They are our best assets. They are our future, and we are committed to fostering a learning environment where diversity is celebrated. We have a team of staff, a team of staff from Equity and Diversity and Counseling, and from our multilingual services preparing to facilitate conversations, both virtual and socially distanced, where small groups of students can dialogue about current issues impacting our world. Information will be forthcoming for students who are interested in joining. I will say that I met with that group today, and we are excited about building a model that can be replicated in each of our schools. We know our young people may feel stress, sadness, frustration, anger, or any combination thereof. Our partnership with Boys Town allows families to speak with a trained counselor 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and that number is 531-299-7233. In addition, each of our high schools has a guidance counselor that is on duty, so young people who are high school age students, you do have a guidance counselor who is on duty for the summer. I want to move into congratulating our class of 2020. About 10, 12 days ago, we finished our virtual graduations. Congratulations to the class of 2020. The last week of May marked the successful completion of our first-ever series of virtual commencement ceremonies for each of our seven high schools. Thank you to the teams who assisted families and gathered all the necessary information to support these virtual ceremonies. The recorded versions are available for replay and sharing with family members and friends. Simply re-access the URL used to watch the graduation. I also want to recognize each of the seven senior class presidents for writing and delivering inspiring remarks to mark the close of this chapter of your lives and usher in the next. Kudos to Ii Ning of Benson High School, Megan Keller of Burke High School, Veronica Alonso of Bryan High School, Ladeja Smith of North High School, Aisha Flores Dominguez of South High School, Victoria Clay of Northwest High School, and Lauren Anderson of Central High School. A job well done to each of you for eloquently representing the class of 2020. We look forward to following your personal and professional narratives and journeys during your next chapter. Congratulations to the entire graduating class. You did it. We wish you all success in the next phase of your lives. We, during the week of May 22, our teachers, professionals, and school administrators concluded their school year by remotely learning best practices for delivering distance learning to our students in virtual and possibly blended school environments in the upcoming school year. The sessions were designed to ensure educators are prepared to optimize the opportunity we have to deliver high-quality curriculum instruction in a one-to-one environment. Like school districts across the metro and the state, we're considering a range of possible scenarios for the fall, and we will continue to share updates with our families as we finalize plans. Our investment in technology and professional development reflects our commitment towards supporting readiness for our teachers and staff and ultimately delivering a quality experience for our students. Well, it's that time. It is summer, and we have our summer reading challenge to hit 2 million minutes. And you know, I struggled with whether or not to highlight this this year, but it's actually even more important this year for our students, especially our K-5 students who received their Scholastic books, plus each of them received a Summer Jump Start book, plus our kindergarten through second students received flashcards to help with sight words over the summer. The summer school starts, though, on the June 15. It will be conducted in a virtual learning environment. District and school staff have been working with families of students who are eligible to participate. We wanted to make sure that each student, however, had a bridge book so that all students receive an opportunity to learn this summer. I also want to ensure families are aware of the academic resources remain available to support students throughout the summer at OPS.org. Students do not need to be enrolled in a summer school to take advantage of these resources. Our summer reading program continues for students' grades PK through six. For families who may not have had a chance to pick up your child's free summer reading books from school, please contact your school to receive your books. We want to encourage all students to continue reading throughout the summer. We've challenged our schools to help encourage summer reading as well. Our goal is to reach 2 million collective reading minutes this summer. Students may log their reading time within the reading log link found at OPS.org. I will say that I already see that, I believe it's Dr. Haynes's school, and Edison that are, I can't recall, and it begins with, oh, God, Harrison and Edison are already in the lead, so keep up that great work. Looking forward to the 2020-21 school year. We have shared with staff and families that a team within our district is planning for a range of possible scenarios for reopening school this fall. Our ultimate plan for how we reopen will be determined based on health conditions and guidance in the months to come. We are working closely with our own health services leadership, as well as local and state health and education leaders. We are in close contact with neighboring school districts and fellow districts within the Council of Great City Schools, which represents all of the large urban districts throughout the country. And we are also, our one-to-one initiative is part of this effort, and as was the remote professional learning that I mentioned earlier. Health and safety is our priority, and we want to maximize in-person learning time for our students and staff in years to come. With all of that in mind, earlier today, we shared with local stakeholders that next week, we will recommend to the Board of Education that we shift the start of our school year by one week, from August 18 to August 11. The timeline would closely mirror nearby school districts and area universities' start of the school year schedules. Soon, families of Omaha Public Schools students will receive an invitation to complete an additional survey about the upcoming school year. Your feedback is crucial in helping us understand how to best support your student and family as we traverse this unknown territory together. Of course, the specifics of what our routines will look like will depend on health conditions in August, as well as the directives we receive from officials. We want to emphasize for our staff and families that we are thoughtfully and intentionally looking forward to best serve our students in the year to come. And we'd like to always end with a high note. A very special Central High School graduate, Emilio Haynes, for his appointment to the United States Military Academy at West Point. Congratulations to you, Emilio, and to the entire Haynes family. To Central High School's Social Studies Department Chair, Gary Groff, for the recognition as the University of Nebraska's Omaha's Outstanding Dual Enrollment Teacher of the Year. Great job. To Benson High for being selected to collaborate with the University of Nebraska Medical Center on their upcoming pharmacy tech program. Benson High students will have the opportunity to work toward their farm tech certification using UNMC's curriculum and hands-on training labs. That is really fantastic. And to our retiring Omaha Public Schools staff, thank you for your hard work and dedication to our students, our families, and community. You will be missed, and we wish you the very best. Enjoy your retirement. I would like to specifically mention four retirees. Susan Floyd from, oh, gosh, I'm forgetting, from Springville, Elmen. Sherry Weir from Morton Middle School, Gaye Lanen from Burke High School, and Jean Haynes, the granddaddy of them all, from North High School. Go Vikings! We certainly, all of you will be missed, and your contribution to the school district will endure for many, many years and decades to come. Thank you. This concludes my remarks this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Logan. Moving on to board members, I will start with Mrs. Cracky.
He started with me because I talked with him earlier about one of our positions that's going to be filled for the Omaha School Foundation. I want to comment on the selection of the person. It is Patrick Born, and I've known him for a very, very long time, and I was so pleased to know that he wants to serve on the foundation. His prior background gives him more great ability to work and know people in Omaha and at the legislative level as well. This is a great coup for us, and we are just very, very pleased with it, and that's a five-star rating. And so, I'm looking forward very much to seeing Patrick at our meetings when we get to reconvene.
Thank you, Mrs. Cracky. Any other comments from board members? Okay, seeing none. I also want to congratulate Mr. Haynes on a retirement. He's been a mentor to mine, and at times when I'm in need, he's always there with a phone call. I will miss my times going to North High and then also going to Jim's Riphaven with him and just hanging out. It's, I didn't go to North High, but he made me feel like I was a Viking, like I went to school there. So, thank you, Mr. Haynes, and thank you for serving not just Omaha, but Nebraska and being a role model for all administrators, teachers, and students. There is no public comment, so I will move on to the consent agenda. Entertainer motion to approve it. There's a motion by Ms. Ryan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Cracky. Mr. Ray, roll call, please, unless there's any abstentions.
President Snow, this is Tracy Cassidy. Yes, I'm abstained from item C, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
All righty. Mr. Ray, roll call, please.
No.
Was your first one, Snow? Sorry.
Yes.
Hi.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Gotti.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Cracky.
Aye.
Pearlman.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Snipe.
Aye.
Eight aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
I'm here.
Oh, Mr. Smith. It is an I as well. Motion carries. Moving on to our next item. I'm sure I get in the right area here. Our first item is action item I1A, first reading of Policy 4043 and Policy 5008. Mr. Ray?
These were brought forward to the Policy Committee and also to the board as information. These are first reading fixes were the changes that Mrs. Gotti pointed out, and then Mr. Pearlman also found a comma in 4043, but otherwise, there has been no changes to either of those policies.
Does anybody have any questions or anything with the first reading? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve the first reading of policies that were just mentioned.
So moved.
There's a motion by Mr. Pearlman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ryan. Discussion. Sure, I got it, so I know if anybody raises their hand. All right, seeing none. Mr. Ray, roll call, please.
Aye.
Gotti.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Cracky.
Aye.
Pearlman.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Snipe.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to item I2A, Student Code of Conduct. And I don't know who's going to start this off. I believe, I'll defer to Mr. Ray unless...
So, this also went in front of the Policy Committee. Dr. McFarland is on the team's call to hit the highlights of the changes and answer any questions. This is an information item coming back next Monday as first reading.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Good evening. We come to you tonight to provide information on the recommended changes for the 2020-21 Student Code of Conduct. The Student Code of Conduct is designed to support disciplinary actions, intervention strategies, and behavior resolutions for all students grades kindergarten through 12th grade in the Omaha Public Schools. We began the annual update process by convening a Code of Conduct Committee comprised of representatives from principals, elementary, middle school, and high school level, alternative education program directors, administrators, teachers, Omaha Education Association leadership, curriculum instruction support, school safety, and other student and community services staff members. We considered input from teachers, students, families, and administrators. Much of the input we received came from real situations throughout the school year encountered from implementing the Student Code of Conduct. In May, as Mr. Ray mentioned, we had the opportunity to present the draft of the 2020-21 Code to the Policy Committee of the Board and have since received additional feedback that are included in tonight's reading. Original changes presented to the Policy Committee are noted in yellow highlight in the actual code draft, and any changes that came after that presentation are highlighted in blue. Before we begin, I want to make sure that you have all the documents that I will be referencing. Document number one is the 2020-21 Student Code Draft. Document number two is the Unauthorized Tools Poster Insert, and document number three is a page-by-page 2020-21 Code Revision Summary. For this reading, I will skip the minor changes such as date changes, grammatical corrections, or word substitutions that are repeated several times, and instead, I will just review those changes that bear more significance. All of the recommended changes are listed in the summary document, document number three, so if any board member has questions over an item that I may skip, I will be happy to address them at the end. So, let's get started.
One second.
Yes?
As you say, if anybody, any questions? Go ahead. Sorry, Dr. McFarland.
That's absolutely fine. On page five, we'll start on page five, to the statement of the second paragraph, second full sentence, where it says the code applies to conduct on school grounds. The committee has recommended adding in remote learning environments on OPS-owned computers and digital devices, and this will support our distance learning opportunities as well as the potential of any blended learning opportunities. On page seven, we have moved the statement that is found later in the current code. It was in this draft. It's on page 14, and the committee has recommended moving it here between the early childhood practices and before we actually get into discussion of the levels of the code. So, that is just a movement, and we do have the deletion of the term "suspension," and we have replaced it with "behavior response." And additionally, we removed the term "practices" and replaced it with "resolutions." On page nine, in the level table for Level 1 violations, we have deleted, in the far-right column, we have deleted "mandatory" and replaced it with "administrative response." So, previously, it was mandatory response. We are replacing it with administrative to provide clarification to who is responsible for this response. This is one of those minor changes that will occur at each level table, so I will not read it again. On page 12, we are recommending the addition of a new violation. The violation is exposure to bodily fluids, and the definition reads "intentionally creating or attempting to create an exposure to bodily fluids, including but not limited to spitting, throwing, wiping, or otherwise dispersing bodily fluids on or to another person for any reason." The recommendation for the addition of this code was that we have seen some incidents of exposure to bodily fluids, and the committee did not feel that any of our current violations addressed it, so we considered other, we considered our responses as well as looking at other districts and codes, and came to the consensus of drafting this recommended violation. Since this is the introduction of a new violation, are there any questions? I'll pause here for a minute unless it, to respond to any questions.
I don't think there's any questions.
Great. Thank you. Moving on to page 13, we are amending the use of tobacco violation to also include vaping. The violation will read "to include students found to be in use of tobacco or any product that may be used to distribute tobacco in any form, including the use of vapor products, electronic nicotine delivery systems, or alternative nicotine products while in the school building, on school grounds, or at school activities." On page 18, under the violation of selling, distributing, intent to distribute, or attempting to distribute drugs, alcoholic beverages, or a controlled or imitation-controlled substance, the recommendation is to change the mandatory response, which will be amended to administrative response, to law enforcement may be contacted. The change was recommended to be consistent in the language with other violations, such if, on that same page, you look up ahead, you can see false alarm bomb threat as well as assault with injury, and you will see that the response is law enforcement may be contacted, and that is due in part to it being a K-12 Code of Conduct, and that administrators are advised to consider the age, developmental capacity, and certainly the specifics of the intent when they are responding to that behavior. On page 24, under the paragraph "definition of bullying," this is one of the highlights that's in blue, so I wanted to make sure I drew your attention. This came after the Policy Committee presentation, and it is under bullying, that we are removing reference to the Due Process Student Support Handbook, which was managed by the Office of Community, School, and Family Engagement through our reorganization now to Student Community Services and also the Office of Equity and Diversity. Our Title 1, I'm sorry, our Title IX Coordinator gives guidance on bullying, and these additions come from his recommendation after there have been changes to Title IX law. So, he just recently shared those, and I wanted to make sure that we got them reflected here. They are also in our district handbook. That is on page 24. And then also on page 25, the committee recommended adding to damage to school, staff, or student property. Previously, it called for, the definition included, call for restitution, and we've been asked to provide a definition, and the definition is restitution is the act of offering repayment for goods or damage to property, which may include, but is not limited to, monetary replacement, the offering of a similar item of value, or physical efforts and contribution to the individual or institution impacted. On page 29, at the bottom is where we would insert the Unauthorized Tools poster, which I believe is document number two. And then on page 33, we have included in the code some behavior rules for students in remote learning environments, again, to support our distance learning opportunities for students and the possibility of blended learning opportunities for students. And the rules for students in remote learning environments. In addition to in-person classroom lessons, students enrolled in the Omaha Public Schools may also receive instruction at home through may also receive instruction at home through remote learning, I'm sorry, through remote teaching and learning experiences. Guidelines and expectations of the Student Code of Conduct remain in effect for students in remote learning environments. Additionally, students receiving digital curriculum and instruction online should be aware of appropriate use of computers, digital devices, and the network. Any activity which violates local, state, or federal laws is considered a violation of the Student Code of Conduct, will result in disciplinary action, and may be referred to law enforcement. It is expected that students adhere to the following behavior guidelines for remote learning. Wear appropriate clothing for the learning environment. Student emails should only be sent for class or course purposes. Do not cut, copy, or plagiarize internet content or the work of others. Use care with food and drinks while using a district device. Use appropriate language for the learning environment. Never post or repost sensitive information or inappropriate images. Students should never create or knowingly send computer viruses. Handle district devices with care. It is required that students adhere to online safety practices for remote learning. Passwords are private, excuse me, let me start again, passwords are private information and should only be shared with parent or guardian. There is a grammatical error there that will be corrected and is corrected on this draft that says shared. I believe yours says share. Students should never use others' passwords. Students should never post personal information, address, email, phone number, et cetera. Should a password become compromised, report it to a school staff member immediately. Report device or content concerns to school staff immediately. Students should never communicate with others they do not know. Students should not share pictures of themselves for any reason other than a learning assignment. Seek support from school staff if having trouble with a district device, network, or online program. And our final recommendation on page 40 is under our attendance, our student attendance policy 5008, which you just had in the first reading. We have adjusted it here because the policy 5008 does have a number seven under B. Number seven is referral to restorative practices or services, and we had neglected to have that in our code, and as that's been an update to statute, it is in the policy and it is in the Code of Conduct.
Thank you.
And that concludes the recommendations for the Student Code of Conduct for the 2020-21 school year.
Thank you so much, Dr. McFarland. We do have some questions. The first question we have is from Ms. Snite.
She answered my question mark during the presentation.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Pearlman.
Yes, thank you. First, I appreciate the meeting we had earlier today. Most of my questions got answered, but I'm still left with a few questions, one of which is if it would be possible to kind of break out some of the things. I'm referring to page 18, Level 4 violations, the selling, distributing drugs, alcohol, or controlled substance, and we talked about this a little bit earlier, because I don't believe that we can, that the district can lawfully have a policy in place that does not require reporting for the sale of controlled substance or alcohol. Those are things that may be viewed as child abuse between the person selling the drug and the person buying the drug, and I don't want teachers to be placed in the position of having to be experts in that area, just like we don't ask them to do that in other areas. What they are required to do as mandatory reporters is to report it and then let the experts sort it out. So that's just one very important thing that hopefully we can get worked out before this is codified, because again, it's not an option to witness, for example, a student selling another student methamphetamine and not call police. Now, if the answer to that is, of course, police are going to be called, which I think that's going to be the response, then our policy ought to reflect that. So I'm hopeful that, you know, nobody wants a situation where a child is caught with an Advil and a leave in their backpack, or even giving it to their classmate because their classmate has a headache. That's not what we're talking about here. We're talking about intentional selling of controlled substance or alcohol. Again, I think that's a no-brainer. If a teacher or staff member sees someone drinking and giving alcohol away at school, I don't think that, it says may notify law enforcement, but I believe that everyone agrees that law enforcement shall be called in those instances, so I just want our policies to reflect that, unless that's what we don't want. So that's my first comment. Is there any response to that?
I will certainly, you did talk about lawfully what we're required to do and that part of policy, so I will actually consult with our legal counsel to make sure that we are lawful. I will say that the intent of our Student Code of Conduct is to provide guidance to our administrators in responding to behavior, and that you will notice as we went through here, our mandatory reporting and those practices as far as our staff are not all listed here, because this is to provide guidance for responding to behavior. But I will, again, I will certainly consult with our legal counsel on that.
Okay, yeah, and I'd invite you to meet with county attorneys and public defenders as well to get both sides of the legal perspective on that as well, because it's something that they deal with every day, and I just don't want to see another issue of mandatory reporting being optional, because it's been something that has been ongoing for years now. The other issue that I brought up and I want to bring up publicly is that the data that I've seen shows that just as zero tolerance policies have been harmful, the opposite has been just as harmful, and that is discretionary disciplinary processes and practices, and it invariably leads to disparate and disproportionate meeting out of discipline. I wish that wasn't the case, but it is the case. I know whether consequences are mandatory or discretionary, bias is bias, and that will have an impact on how students are disciplined, but that doesn't mean that it should be codified in suggesting that the consequences for behavioral issues should be discretionary when the data shows what the outcomes will be, and so I have a real concern about that. And I guess I haven't seen the suspension and expulsion numbers from last year or the year before. I know when I was here the first year on the board, I asked to see those numbers, and I saw an incredible increase in K-6 suspension and expulsion rates, on the orders of like 60% increase year over year. So I'd be interested to see what things have looked like over the past two years, but my concern is from past research that this type of discretionary discipline has known outcomes, and it's not the outcomes that I don't think anyone on this board, and I know, I know that's not what the board's goals are or the administration's. So I guess I just wanted to voice that concern.
Thank you. I do appreciate that, and I will tell you that we do certainly look at the data with our behavior. It does play a limited role in our discussion in the Code of Conduct, but it is certainly how we approach discipline, and certainly with our multi-tiered systems of support for behavior, very specifically and intentionally looking at the data that shows our suspensions and the disproportionality. The Student Code of Conduct, as I said, is guidance, because we really do take that developmental approach to discipline in that it's teaching and learning rather than punitive. And so I will tell you that yes, we look at the data, and I did receive the article that you sent me on disproportionality. I appreciate that. I took a quick look at the executive summary, and that is the exact information that is driving much of the work that we are doing with our multi-tiered systems of response for behavior, as well as part of the strategic plan, and under the priority for ethic of care, the intentionality of our social emotional learning, because we are really taking a multi-pronged approach for how we work with our students and with our staff, in addition to training, for how we approach behavior.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
I have a question, because I realize that this is an extremely important item. It's extremely important that the guardian parent sits down, looks at it, signs it, dates it, all of that, or how many people will be, even if they have shared custody, they all have to see this document, because we can't just throw it out there to talk with the children, students about it, and then expect it to happen, or if something else happens, then have people outraged and they didn't sign the form. So where is that particular item? Is it at the end of all this, or is it the beginning of it?
Thank you, Mrs. Crackey. It is an educational tool. We do use the Student Code of Conduct, our district handbook, and our school behavior practices as a teaching tool for our students and our family. This next year, we have, we are going to have our handbooks, and our, specifically the Student Code of Conduct has an electronic device that is available for families. It will be posted on school webpages, as well as they can have a printed copy. It will be a PDF copy that can be printed for those who request it. And one of the things that we are looking at is how we will have an electronic acknowledgement, but then it's not just a one-time tool that we use at the start of the year, but we can actually use it ongoing with our students, with our staff, as well as with our community stakeholders.
And this is taking, for me, it's taking a lot for granted, because I like to have a paper form, even if it's like a postcard, something on file for us to readily find. I just know that there are things that will be happening, or may, or whatever, and I just want everybody to be in the loop right up front, because I just, I have to know that someone with this child, the student, has looked at this form with them and has gone over it. Now, how am I going to know that? In what way will I be seeing the evidence of that?
It is not actually in the code, but we do, just as we have our parents and our students acknowledge receipt of the Student Code of Conduct in past years, and we have them acknowledge that they received instruction in it, we will continue to have that available. And if we're not doing it on specific paper, just as we are currently, where every student has to have one at the start of the year, and that we have that contact with the parent, we will have it electronically, but we are also exploring the opportunities to do some distance learning, even for our families, to be able to record some professional development for our families about the Student Code of Conduct. That maybe when we release the electronic version of the Student Code, we can also have a video or a podcast that can go along with it to make sure that we are giving that guidance, and then also giving families, if they have questions or want to provide feedback, a means to do that in addition to their school, but also through our office.
In my case, I'm still going to persist on this, because I know that not every parent sits down and does these things. So how am I going to know that's happening? And their signature probably is readable, you know, we know it's a parent, not the child, I would hope, but I like to have something readily available for the staff to understand, the parent, guardian, somebody has looked at this with the student. It goes back to the clothing items they wear in school, and then when they get there, the principal has to call the parent to come and get them, or bring them adequate clothing, and maybe they will act like they have not seen this. So maybe they have, maybe they haven't, but I was around long enough to know that not everybody follows through with this the way we want them to, and I think it's just a really significant piece of the teaching, learning activities, and it will better us and go farther if we are certainly certain we've got them on our team, or they have seen it, or they wrote us a question or something. So how can we get that attached, this in some way, so that it makes me more comfortable?
So, Mrs. Crackey, if you are saying that we have an attachment to this code, that the parents acknowledge that they have received it, and they've sat down and had that conversation?
I can remember getting the card back from the student, and I would go down the alphabetical list, and I would follow through to call a parent or something if we hadn't gotten it yet, because it gives you a lot of credibility if you know that they know what you're about.
And, Mrs. Crackey, we still intend to do exactly that, to get the acknowledgement from every parent.
I'm sorry, dropping that home, but that's good. You know me, and so that's good.
Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Crackey.
Thank you, Dr. McFarland, and thank you, Mrs. Crackey, for pointing that out. Up next is Mrs. Gotti.
Thank you. So I have just a couple comments, and I'm not coming at this on page 18 from necessarily the legal position that Mr. Pearlman has pointed out a number of things for just from the parent standpoint, the two items, the arson and the selling and distributing of drugs or alcohol. To me, as a parent, I say, okay, that's an illegal activity. I want my child to be in a safe environment, and I want to know that my school will make sure that my child is safe. And so from my perspective, from a parent who is no longer a parent of OPS, but was for 19 years, I just want to know from a safety standpoint, and by changing it to "may," that reduces my comfort level. So that's my thoughts on page 18. On page eight, why did we remove the late-school suspension after school? And the reason I ask is that I've heard, as I'm sure most board members have heard from teachers in the district over the past year, just about the challenges they're facing with discipline in the classroom, and that sometimes these, you know, work after school or a detention in that manner is a deterrent for behavior that may be continuing if they don't have that. So I'm just curious to know why the late-school suspension after school removal.
Thank you, Mrs. Gotti. It was removed because that is detention, whether it is on a Saturday, or whether it is after school, or before school, it satisfies the definition of detention, and so that's why we removed it.
So it was redundant, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Not separate? Okay, okay, so that's good. And I think just to Mr. Pearlman's comment, I know I had a staff person that said, and I appreciate his comments, just about making sure we don't go overboard on discipline, but making sure that we hold kids accountable. And their comment was, you know, we have a pretty high standard, and clearly, I remember those days well, when we put in the academic requirements for our students to participate in sports and athletics. Let's make sure we hold our students behavior-wise to that same standard. They will rise to the challenge if we do that, and do it in a fair and equitable way across the board. So I guess that would be the one comment I would make that I've heard most recently that I thought was pretty poignant.
And that certainly is our goal when we address our students' behavior, and certainly the training that we have continued to provide. the training that we have continued to provide to our staff. We continue to expand it every year. Two years ago, it was to the assistant principals and principals. This last year, we expanded across the district to all of our deans. We continue to expand the work that our school support liaisons do to provide support to buildings, and continuing to have access to staff and actually presentations, so that everybody is aware, and just continuing to raise that awareness with how we approach behavior, as you said, in a fair and balanced way with our students, but also providing some tools to our staff to be able to teach and reteach the desired behaviors and to positively reinforce them.
Can I jump in and ask a question here? Will this...
One second, Mrs.
Okay.
One second. I want to continue before you have your next question. Ms. Ryan.
Thank you, President Snow, and thank you, Dr. McFarland, for all the work that you've done in this. I've, since I joined the board four years ago, I've always been working with the Code of Conduct, and I appreciate where it's gotten in the last four years. With that being said, I think that it's in a great place at this point, and I would have probably voted for it if the current events that have recently taken place had not taken place. And so that's really something that I've been reflecting on longer and thinking about whether or not what our role is in the school-to-prison pipeline and how we really implement restorative justice. And for me, it really comes down to that SRO piece. And I know that this is going to be an unpopular opinion amongst some board members and also some community members, but I really believe that we need to get law enforcement out of our schools. And I want to see, before we approve this on the 15th, because I'm assuming we won't be able to change the SRO piece for this current one, but I would encourage the future board to think about that and the role that officers and law enforcement play in our schools. But what I would really like to see is that report that Mr. Pearlman mentioned, to break it down by how suspensions and disciplinary actions are with our students by school, race, gender, and any IEPs and stuff like that, and then also how many were referred to SROs or law enforcement. So that would be my ask, and just making it clear that I cannot ungood, conscious vote yes on this on the 15th while it still has the SRO piece in it. And that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Mrs. or Ms. Ryan. The SRO piece that is in here, certainly that is really above the scope of the Code of Conduct, but I know that Mr. Ray and various other people who are more responsible for the role of the SROs in schools are on this, as well as you referenced the suspension and expulsion report, that, yes, our research colleagues are working on that with our student community staff currently on a presentation that will come to the board regarding suspension and expulsion. And you also, I'm sorry, did mention referral to law enforcement, which is also one of the required fields that we have for our discipline report to NDE, which should be finalized, I believe, by the end of this month, our NDE behavior report. So we should be able to provide you that, but it would not be in advance of our next meeting.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Pardon me, sorry.
I would be...
Okay, up next, Mrs. Crackey.
And for me, being in the school system, seeing everything, and even after not being a teacher in the classroom and visiting shows, et cetera, an SRO presence, to me, is extremely important. You can't go to the West Rose and not have someone look, search things as you enter the door of different stores, et cetera. It is everywhere for us to think we, with the children who may, as you said, in the current environment, and some of the things that have happened in this very, very long period of time we've been away from them, it's going to take more than just sit down and let's open the book. You know, we are going to have to really structure this, and I know that Cheryl, Dr. Logan, referred to tapes and different things that will help us. And it is ongoing. It's something that we just do. It's kind of a review also. And all I could think of was, oh, mine, with all of this upheaval, because we have had so many, many, many times when we have gone to those kinds of meetings where we are talking about those kinds of things. And it's always fresh, and it's always, something else always comes up, and we always need to review things. But we have a big responsibility, and our responsibility is we really want our children to learn. And we need to put everything in place that's going to make the atmosphere good for them and for us, so the learning can take place. So I am really pleased and happy with many of the SROs. I think that the principals have the ability to do some choosing and picking of people, and some of them are retired, people that have been around a while. I guess, I think it's a good idea. That's my opinion, and I'm probably just as strong as the other opinion of not having them. And think about it, what landparent wouldn't want their child in a very safe school and know that the safety is there for them?
Thank you, Mrs. I'm sorry. Thank you, Mrs. Crackey. Mr. Pearlman, is your hand raised again?
Yes, it is.
Mr. Pearlman.
Thank you. Just briefly, you know, one thing that I was thinking about when I talk about how, and this is just real limited, I just want to go back to it being discretionary, whether or not to notify law enforcement when an employee observes this selling of a controlled substance. You know, it's one thing to not want to put our teachers and staff members in a position of, you know, do I report, do I not report? But if there's ever going to be instances where staff do not have to report the sale of a controlled substance, and remember, controlled substances aren't ad valorem, it's marijuana, cocaine, methamphetamine, fentanyl, heroin, what are the teachers supposed to do with those drugs? I mean, that's a real question. So when I talk about, we, like, we can't do this policy, I really mean we can't do this policy because if someone, if a teacher sees a student selling meth and they don't call police, there's only one other thing they can do. Well, there's two things. They can let the kid keep the meth, or they can take it from them. Neither one of them is okay. So that's something that I'd say.
Thank you, Mr. Pearlman. I do believe Dr. McFarland is going to consult legal counsel as we move forward with this. Does anybody else have their question, any questions before we move on? Okay, seeing none, as you review this and your constituents have questions, please don't hesitate to email that to Mr. Ray and Dr. Logan and refer those questions there, and they'll try to get them answered as soon as possible before this comes back on the 15th. We want to make sure that we get everyone's answer, questions answered before we vote on this, which is a big tool for the district. Thank you, Dr. McFarland, for your team and all the hard work that have all put into this. And we're moving on to our next item. And one second. The closed session. Dr. Holman.
Hey, can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
I moved at the Board of Education, going to closed session for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the superintendent, secretary to the board, Charles Wakefield, personnel, and legal counsel pending litigation, real estate, and legal advice.
There's a motion to go on a closed session by Dr. Holman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith. Roll call, please.
Holman.
Aye.
Crackey.
Aye.
Pearlman.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Knight.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Gotti.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. After we get out of closed session, we will go back to the meeting. We do have another item on the meeting just for the public, and we're going into closed session. So let me remind the board that the purpose for closed session is for the protection of the public interest and for prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the superintendent, secretary to the board, Charles Wakefield, and legal counsel pending litigation, real estate, and legal advice. I think I hit everything. The motion did pass. Let the rec reflect. The board will run the closed session at 7:30. I think I hit everything. The motion did pass. Let the record reflect the board run the closed session at 7:30.
I've got to show it to you. It's awesome.
Oh my goodness. Did you make it?
No, someone made it for me and then mailed it to my home.
Oh my goodness.
Actually, the webs made it for me and mailed it to my home.
So if the webs are watching, they can mail me one as well. You can find my site. Are we back on, Mr. Ray?
If you look to your right, see if Adam's giving you a thumbs up.
Up. We're on. We're on. Alrighty. I did skip over the receipt of reports, which is J1, which is the OSERS actuarial evaluation report that's on there. We don't have anything else. And actually, we got a vote on item H2, which is item L. So entertain a motion to approve the proposed staffing adjustments.
So moved.
There's a motion by Miss. Is there a second?
Second, Gracie.
Second by Ms. Cassidy. Any other discussion? Mr. Ray, roll call, please.
Crackey.
Aye.
Roman. Aye. Ryan.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Dunning.
Aye.
Paulman.
Aye.
Nine, aye.
Motion carries. Thank you so much. That's the last part of the meeting here. I do want to congratulate everybody on the board, as well as our superintendent and staff for working tirelessly to come up with our equity policy and Dr. Logan's experience working with this in other districts, as well as Meg, not Megan, I apologize, Amanda Ryan, who's in charge of our policy committee for steering that for the board. Thank you guys so much and be safe out there. Meeting's adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. Snow. Appreciate it. Good night, everyone.